I'll call the Swin County Department of Labor and Food and Water for a budget session in May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five for a P U. Younger release our pledge.
Face the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a budget session twenty five, twenty six budget. Where we're at, this should be our final budget.
Hopefully, yes. Um, I had by the end of May, we have to present a budget, a balanced budget. So that's what you're going to have here in your ordinance. The paper that I gave you, the little bitty writing is revenues that was asked for last time. So that's revenues year to date as of today per department. That way you can see that. So as you go through the ordinance, of course, the first page are each department expenditures. That also includes any debt service and then special appropriations as well. And then the next few pages are revenue that we expect from the different revenue sources. Some have been added. We added several revenue on the recreation department because it was all kind of going into one lump sum. So we added per program. So you can kind of see what's actually coming in per program. And then we have solid waste revenues. And we also have on the back, the fourth or fifth page is the human services fund, which is going to be your DSS and health department. And then you have family support and preservation, which is your FSFP, ran out of the family resource center, public safety capital reserve, and then school capital reserve fund, redevelopment, EDC. And then you have your final page, of course, tax rate at forty one cents. So we would expect ad valorem taxes, we're looking at about seven point eight million this year. So on that second page, you'll see the ad valorem for the last ten years. So I just looked at what was still outstanding for each of those years and had a little bit of a hope that we might be able to get some of that money. So obviously outstanding from two thousand fifteen forward is more than what's on there, but the hope is we'll be able to collect some of those going through. So within this budget, it is a balanced budget currently. Within it, there is some form of the salary study for each department. So the new salary schedule was implemented and then salaries updated. There were grade changes for a lot of departments up. So there is some, some form of that per department. So some, some departments went, you know, we, we looked at what grade they were at versus where they were going, what the difference was, and kind of met in the middle, just depending on each department. So it is, it is in there, like I said, in some form, but it's balanced. I know that overtime has been a discussion. So for the sheriff and jail, the overtime budget is out of their budgets. They will be going back to the seven K plan, which is an eighty-six hour payroll plan for them. And then they'll earn comp if they have to work over that eighty-six hours. And then the rule, the comp rule is if you have for anyone in law enforcement, so those two departments, over four hundred and eighty hours of comp earned, it's paid out to them each payroll. And then all other employees is two hundred and forty. But that's something that we watch and we really encourage employees, once they start, if they're having to accumulate any comp time to, you know, adjust to take off lecture time so that you can use some of that time.
You making thoughts, questions? I know she put a lot of work in this.
Comp time, it's, it's not time and a half, it's comp time.
It's, it's earned at time and a half. It depends on how you are, if you're exempt or non-exempt. So employees that are doing like administrative functions, it's an hour for hour. And then other employees, it's, it's time and a half. So it's earned and then banked at the end of that.
Which employees would be which?
Um, so usually your department heads and those, I say administrative functions are the hour to hour. Every department head basically is if you supervise more than two full-time people. So department heads and then there, if there's steps within the department, like at DSS, there's steps, you know, there's the director and then supervisors above workers. Those supervisors are also at an hour for hour. So usually the time and a half is just the, the actual employee, not anyone overseeing anyone else.
What happened, please?
We have got another question. What, as comp time, we're going to be in the same boat we was with our real time. Maybe even a worse.
So you could be if everyone earns up to four eighty and everyone leaves at the same time. Most of the time, if an employee leaves, they're going to get that paid out, you know, and it could be eight to ten thousand dollars if that's paid out, if they're maxed out. But as a yearly running amount, I do not believe that it will be as much as what was budgeted and they were spending in overtime.
Would there be any way to put a, a stopping point on the, the contact?
Well, um.
To a certain point?
Legally, that's what that four eighty and two forty is legally, we can't go over that as a local government. So that's where that number is. But it's definitely conversation, like I was saying, every few months, I kind of look at what comp's at across the board for all employees and have that conversation with the department heads to say, hey, you know, these are the employees that have some comp time, you know, how are we gonna be able to use it or what are we gonna do to be able to get this down, you know? Or we have the conversation of why is there comp time earned? Is there something we need to be doing different?
Short words, we're going to turn overtime into comp.
Yes, then it's just, it's not a budgeted, I mean, it's not a, a budgeted item within the budget. You see what I'm saying? Like, it's not a set dollar amount. And it's, it's also having the conversation with the department heads to see, you know, is that something you can control? You know, what, what your employees are earning comp based on what they're scheduled for, you know? And, and I know that we always talk emergencies and there's things that are going to require employees to work over their schedule or some employees, but I think it's also having that conversation to see, can they work on controlling that on their side as well?
But our budget's going to have the same thing, budget's doing as much overtime as we had last?
No, there's no overtime budgeted in those two departments. So EMS is looking at a schedule change, which will change their overtime, it should lower it. And then emergency communications, which is dispatch, is the only other department that gets paid overtime. And they have a set schedule, so we know exactly what theirs is. And I was going to just real quick, kind of go through departments and talk about what I left in there and what I didn't, just so you're aware, as far as the requests go. So for elections, I did leave that part-time person going to full-time. And then we did increase some for travel and we, the capital outlay was lower just due to the possibility they had already purchased some of the computers and things. So there was not as big of a need. So that's that department. Finance, there was not any data processing. For the tax office, I did leave the additional employee up there, which would be on the tax collection side. And obviously the flyover and revow are still in those contracted services, just so no matter what we do, we have a dollar amount in there to cover whatever we're doing. We have to do the flyover for sure to pay for that, but for the revow, we just want to make sure that there's a dollar somewhere to cover that, so we're not backing up. In mapping, I did move the one person from the tax to the mapping office, so that way we have an office of two. And that way, if something happens to one person, there is someone else to feel that. We had to contract last year, which we've already talked about. So that's where that is. Register of deeds did not have any specific quest. So building and grounds, we put into three departments. So we have building and grounds, mechanic, and then special projects. So for the building and grounds, I did leave a, an additional full-time person in there. I also put in funding, which we talked about the last one, for the concrete to go in front of the bathrooms on Alarca and a playground redo. So that's within this, in the building and grounds budget. The senior center project as well to finish that concrete or paving of their parking lot is in there. We, I did leave the supply increase because I have talked one-on-one a lot with Cabot about how much cleaning supplies have cost. And so a majority of the cleaning supplies for the county is budgeted out of there. And then we talked about, he had a request for a vehicle, a track hoe mowers. We did use leaf blowers. We did remove that track hoe, like we had discussed at the last meeting, about using the one at sanitation, if we're to approve one for sanitation, use it if there's a project that comes up. So there is a vehicle in there, but no track hoe and then possibly a mower. But he said that their mowers are not terrible. The best one they have is actually like fifteen or twenty years old. So, so that one is good. On special projects, Bobby did have, ask for a full-time employee, but he said that, you know, we originally talked hiring the one and having them split. He said he was good. So he has said just to leave that full-time person in maintenance. For the mechanic, we do, I left the brake lay for supplies because that's a very common thing. And then the scanner for the car programming. So when a car messes up, his scanner is outdated, so he can just see what's going on. For the sheriff, they had requested, we did a little bit of move, so they have a contract with W C Transport that does those I V C transports, and those were all in contracted services. So starting next year, we're going to break that out separate, where we see that cost for transporting in a separate line instead of contracted services. So we broke that out. And then they had asked for sixteen vehicles and then the drone and the building and they, the capital outlay had totaled one point two. My suggestion was six vehicles and a total of four hundred and fifty for capital outlay for that department. For the jail, I have left in the capital outlay for the control panel. I'm still waiting on the insurance. He emailed me last week and said he should have a decision at the end of last week, and I did not hear from him, so I asked him again today, what is the, the update on that? I left it in there just in case, but obviously hopefully if the insurance covers it, that will be an expense we won't have. For emergency management, so if we recall, this is the fire marshal and it was the maintenance physicians. So we talked about paid firefighters. So within this budget is six paid, which would be two at each department. I know we kind of went back and forth about what we wanted to look at, what we wanted that to be like. So it'd be two at rescue, two at West Swain, and then two on Alarca. So would, they would actually be paid firefighters, you know, obviously probably looking at, adjusting the schedule so they're covered a majority of the day in during the time in which they are the busiest, you know, maybe first thing in the morning you're not, but afternoon is. So that's what's in that budget there. Emergency communications, she had requested two different positions, but I talked to Misty and we put that down to one. It's a split, it was a split shift dispatcher and then a new trainer position. So she's going to try to mesh those into two. So the trainer would be there during the busiest times to help come or cover some of those extra things. I also left in their capital outlay, the ten thousand for their radio refresh. That's what our requirement is, the state pays the eighty-nine thousand for the other part of that. Inspections, the only request they had was their civic plus program, which is the program in which they do permits through. So I left that in there at fifty-seven hundred a year. EMS had two new employees, building repair, supplies, uniforms, and then they had two new ambulances. So within that, I did leave the two new employees and some building repair, not the full, so they can kind of choose what's more important. Supplies I did leave at the request because it's for medical supplies on the ambulances. And uniforms was a small increase due to adding employees. And then the capital outlay, we budgeted for one ambulance instead of two. Soil and water, I did put a vehicle in for them for pulling up their trailer. So that was added into their budget. Cooperative extension had no changes. Recreation, so in her maintenance and repair, building and grounds, we had new bathrooms, new classrooms, new rec center doors, and then trail maintenance. I did leave, she had originally requested a hundred thousand, no, I'm sorry, fifty thousand, and I put that one down to, no, she requested seventy, no, let me find it. Yes. So she requested fifty and I put that to forty, so that way we could hopefully get those bathrooms updated as well as the trail. The trail is just really working on the stairs that's on there because they're kind of rotten and falling apart. And then the new doors at the rec center, so to replace all those doors that have kind of been beaten and tore up when people are trying to break in. I did remove the, in contracted services, she had asked for a hundred thousand dollars for cameras. I did remove that. I put about twenty thousand in that she could use for lighting or maybe a few cameras. The issue is there is not Wi-Fi or good Wi-Fi service all over the area. So we've got to work on getting to that point before we can actually put cameras. We've, we also talked about putting electronic locks on the bathroom door because some of the issue is if the bathrooms are or are not getting locked at night. So we're going to be putting something where it's a coded, where it can be locked every And I did leave a playground update where her hope is the big one on the bottom. We may have to do it in stages just because it is going to be a large expense. So we did put some money in there for that larger playground. Animal services, of course, there was not any changes except for the addition of the vet tech, which was already in there the last time. And then sanitation, they had requested three thirty-yard roll-offs and a track hoe. So I did figure and put both of those into their request. The last is special appropriations. So this is the one that's kind of all over the board. And I probably should print it, but we can kind of go through. So, um, the fire departments, of course, are at the same. Bryson City did request two hundred and twenty-five, so we gave them ninety-five last year. They requested two twenty-five. I put one twenty-five. So they did not actually send me their TUCASG contract with that amount. I don't know if they're waiting until we come back with the number to say yea or nay. That's what I put there. Rescue squad stayed at fifteen, Quala at seven, fire investigation team at a thousand. Marianna Black Library did request two hundred and ninety. So that was a thirty, a forty-five thousand dollar increase for them, most of that being, some of it maintenance, and then their part-time employees were all at like nine dollars. So they have adjusted their, or wanting to adjust their rates. So that's where that is at. The Board of Ed had a current expense request at one point eight six three million, a capital outlay of a hundred and eighty, an additional appropriation of three hundred and sixty-four nine thirteen, and then Article forty-six contingency of two hundred. I did change their current expense. Last year, we gave them a million. I did put it at one point one this year, and I left in their capital outlay at one eighty. Their additional appropriation of that three hundred and sixty-four nine thirteen, that's going to be for the reading assistants, the dean of students.
Nurses.
The nurses and social workers. That's what that would cover. And then their two hundred thousand for their Article forty-six is for that three-person special team.
And that's their money, correct? Like Article forty-six?
Yes, that two hundred is theirs, yes.
It just passes through us.
They do have a Board of Ed Forrest receipts, that's hit or miss. We estimate it to be about twenty-five thousand. For S C C local side expense, I left theirs at one fifty because we are trying to look at some of their needs and see if we can help meet their needs in a different way than what they requested. So we're, we're working on that too. So there may be an amendment later on. If we can't meet their needs as a county, we have our HVAC person looking at the HVAC to see, you know, what other things they can come up with besides a, a company coming in and doing their HVAC system. So I left that there just so that we can kind of figure out what that looks like future. Everything else going down, so the mental health was left at the same six and twenty. And then state of Franklin, senior aid program was left the same rope. They did receive an additional dollar amount, so I, I left that where they're going to get that because that's all pass-through money. The nutrition program is the same. Elderly assistance is twenty thousand the same. Their transit and van went up about a thousand dollars. So we did that one. Local match, they requested forty from thirty-four thousand, I did that for them. They had also requested a part staff, which I did not do, and they had requested a hundred and twenty additional in operating funds, which I did sixty for them. That's just to cover whatever above and beyond they don't receive specific funding for. Social services is at nine fifty, health department is at six thirty-five. Safe had originally requested thirty-five, I left them at their thirty, which was from last year. Southwestern planning at eleven thousand two seventy-three. Southwestern commission was at seventy-seven thousand two ninety-two. And then the county match for southwestern commission is six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven. And then our J C P C juvenile crime prevention, three thousand seventy-two. And then at the very bottom, we do not have, in these line items, the debt service and the bond service are not, there's nothing for those. Legal, I left at thirty. Forestry is at eighty, that's for the forest service, for them to be in our area. And then transfer to public safety is one twenty-five, which is what has always been. So that's kind of the special appropriations, and I can print that, I'm sorry, I did not print that. So any questions about? Yeah, it's on that very front. It totals four million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty. Yeah, yeah.
Is this on here a lot of where I requested to see? Any, any of these had money left over from last?
I don't know. No, this is just the revenue side. I can print the expense side, though.
Did any of them have money left over?
Well, we're not finished yet. So some of, some of the departments do have funding. And at the next session, since it'll be the work session of June, will be that, what I call final budget amendment, to get all of the departments at zero or as close as we can estimating what will be spent in June. So that's where you'll see, I can still print you a report and make it bigger than that, but I can, it'll just, that, that budget amendment will also show what departments were actually over in spending as well.
I, I think it's very important for us to see if, which one happened, if it was any of them had that left over. Did we not decide to, to put this firefighting stuff on the ballot?
I think we talked about the, the tax or the fee, but I don't, don't think we said anything about the positions. I think the positions were already there from last year.
There were one, one position per department, but I know that the whole thought and process goal was to try to do two per department in the next year.
I believe last year's, instead of firefighters, I believe it was maintenance. Big difference, payroll and everything. And then it was just one.
One per department, yeah.
I'm still convinced that we would have let the people vote on that. If they say yea, I'll be out for it, and if they say nay, I'll be just like them right now, all again.
And I know that we have brought up the emergency services fee. We kind of talked about that. That is not figured in here in any way, shape, or form, just because it was not a final decision kind of thing. So we can't, I mean, if we want to discuss and say, let's see what a number looks like based on this, this, and this, or not, it's completely up to you all.
When are we going to be sure whether the jail has that plan? If that's going to be, to me, that's very important.
Yeah.
I've been in that.
I think, I'm hoping in the next couple of days. Like I said, he was supposed to have the answer back last week because he's waiting on someone else because he's just, you know, the adjuster, just the basic person. So I did email him today, ask him for a follow-up. So as soon as I hear that from him, I will know what their position is.
How are we going to go about sharing a backup? I mean, they use that one out there for all their merit, I'll be, and to squash it in them where they can get some. How, how would we go about?
In my conversation with Cabot, he did not, right off the top, he did not have any projects that he felt he would even need one for. So I don't know that we even have anything coming up. It was just a thought because they have one, you know, that's older, like as a replacement. So, but when I had a conversation with him about budget, he didn't feel that there would be probably a need for one even within this year.
Well, even if needed share it, it, it would be possible to do that because you're not going to be using it steady out there, you know, might use it two or three days a week to push a bed on packing. But if they had a project come up that they needed it for maintenance, then I'm sure we could work, work it out to where you could share the machine. But right now, like she says, don't see any project in the future that's going to require a big excavator. We've got the small excavator that does everything we need to do right now.
Has the county got a truck and a trailer big enough to haul it?
No.
So we'd have to pay somebody to move it.
Or buy a truck and trailer, so that wouldn't be feasible.
We better pay somebody to move it.
Well, unless we had a project coming up, that came up to use a big excavator, it probably wouldn't have been moved about there.
We did put a new employee in, two new thing?
Four, we did one for Cabot. Both he and Bobby had requested an employee.
I made for the E M A.
Oh, we put two in for EMS.
I believe with the salary study being implemented, I think it'll help us with hiring the people that we need to hire. I think it can help us with retaining people too as well.
I think a lot of studies is draining our money and we're still right where we was before we ever started again. I think a lot of studies just drain our money and we're still right where we was before we ever started again.
Hopefully my, my goal would be we can, we can see that in the next six months. We can see, are we gaining employees in those positions that we haven't been able to fill like paramedics because of this? Or are we still where we are at? I think that that will, I think we'll be able to see that.
Sometimes we need to stop and realize what's important. EMS, search department, it's more important than a lot of these other things that we try to do. Got a half in them. It's still everything we got. Nobody won't haul you to hospital when you have ours.
I'm always saying the same thing, but I said, we need to take care of, we want to take care of us.
Some of this junk could have waited. The animal shelter? Not into the town. But uh, I guess we've got a deal out there. Now that deal, you know, box one hundred and twenty-two shields would have done really good. I don't know, y'all.
I think the animal shelter, when it's up and running, will be appreciated by everybody in the county.
Well, I know there's.
I think it is a needed thing.
Well, I know there's been other counties that have reached out to us too. That would like to partner with us. So if they can partner with us and.
I did that. Did you ever reach out to them?
No, they reached out to me and we were waiting until we kind of had an idea of when it looks to open and that sort of thing. Before we actually uh went back and talked to them, just because I hate to say, we think it's this day when it may be weeks out and they've got a pile of animals. I don't want that to happen either, so.
That's even gonna be a bigger burden on the county, y'all, that we don't even realize yet. When you talk about that, that takes, you, 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 we're building a bigger burden. For the thing we've seen here, went through all the, all of the uh departments and tried to cut. And, and, and we, we went through all that, but we're still, we knocked a little down and we build a whole load of butt. And, and it's. I don't know. This is a little tiny county, just a little bit of money. We try to act like it's a big colossus. Have anything we want. We can't. It's like going into Walmart with a five-dollar bill. You can't get anything you want.
Anything.
What you can with five-dollar bill.
Um, go ahead, Bobby.
We have one more meeting on this. Budget. I say we have one more meeting on the budget.
No, we'll have to set a public hearing. Has to be on display for ten days. So it is balanced right now. It's on display for ten days. And we have to set a public hearing date, which means anybody that wants to come um to talk about it will come. And then at that point, you can vote on it if you're good with what it looks like. But the work session's just next week. It's not enough time. Yes.
Let me ask you a question. And now, I mean, just, I, I mean, you can't give me no number. If you cut the overtime that we, that we had last year. Out of all the departments, which I know that's gonna be a little bit, you could steal part of the employees we knew. And you could keep the budget basically what it was last year.
No, because of the salary study. So like with the sheriff, that overtime dollar amount was taken out, but when their salary was adjusted. There's some savings, but it's not the, that full amount because the salary stays. So it's essentially redistributing that overtime to the employees.
How close would it get? It's pretty close though.
What do you mean to do?
I, if you had your overtime, basically all gone, not, not go with the comp time. Cause everybody would wanna build a comp time, that'd take a whole hunting season. It's basically a little out. But i- if you done that. You, you, you'd be, we're talking one, two, what I heard you say, one, two, three, four, five, five new employees is what we're talking. We'd be getting pretty close with that overtime down to a horrible. Because the one employee for the EMS last year, he had more in overtime than his salary was. So if his overtime was down, that's one employee that we could have back.
And that's EMS, the civic is looking at adjusting theirs.
Four that were needed. And if we cut the overtime, I think we'd be getting pretty close to the salary could be pretty close to what it was without the overtime. It's still horrible to help them.
If we didn't do any of the salary study. So if we did not put the updated salary schedule into place. Do great changes, anything like that, yes. But because that is done across the board. For those, the two sheriff and jail specific, because they have paid overtime. That's, that kind of covered their salary increases. But your other departments, um, when, cause you, when you look at the whole thing. Everybody had some kind of change. So that's where their, their dollar amounts is not covering those new positions because there were changes within every department.
Instead of a salary study to where everybody. I don't really get what I can hear you there. But uh. If, if we're just gonna sta- say we studied very low, just fire these fleets by, and we give them. And let you and the top four earners stay right where you stay.
And.
Then we could, then.
The, the issue that comes into that is you start closing your gap of all, like, for instance, like sanitation. If you leave Jerry here and you increase his people, you're closing the gap of the difference. Like their salary's gonna be.
That's a good thing, man. It's a good same thing I said with.
Well, normally it's, should be a twenty percent split is what, what is ideal in local government. And we try to do that, but that's not always possible.
No, I, I, I understand, but uh, uh, salary study very well. I understand it. I don't think it's real tired because I think a whole lot of people don't need it. But I, I understand how it works very well. I'm just trying to, to maybe see a way to get what we want and uh pretty well stay where we was anyway.
Yeah, it seems like on here on the, the total receipts of, if you look on the last page there. Last year or this past year, right now, it's twenty-four seven, twenty-four million, seven hundred thousand, five, you know, whatever. And, and it looks like we're three hundred thousand below that. So I mean, we're. So we're, we're still staying under, but we're getting in revenue right now. Under three hundred thousand dollars, which is pretty good.
But we could probably come up even farther than that. It's good to have a P P bank.
I agree, but at the same time, I wanna take care of our employees. I think.
I, I mean. Especially the ones that don't make hardly nothing. I wanna take good care of them.
I also.
They do the brunt of the work. They get dirty like I am.
I, I agree, but I wanna take care of everybody. I, I think it's important. Think, it doesn't matter if you got a masters or you do got a high school education. If you're doing work, you're just as important. And I, I think we should take care of them. It's just my opinion.
Let's take the firefighters off the table. Let's let them vote up. We take that up. That would hurt. That would hurt some employees we need.
I'm not for that. Cause any times you put a fee on the ballot, they won't vote.
That's what, that's what my fellow commissioners is afraid of, ain't it?
No, they won't vote. And, and people in the communities have asked us to do something about. Implement the fees the way you did. It's also one that you could pay for overtime.
No, we don't need overtime.
Well, you're gonna have to have so much overtime. It's a, that's a given. Unless you've got a.
I worked construction for years. And when a man would come to me and say, I've got this job. But there's no overtime. You're gonna have to do it on a forty-hour week. And I know that. And that's what I done it on a forty-hour week.
I agree with that. With the standard, somehow the government world doesn't work that.
No, the government don't work.
Well, you take for instance, if Phillipson, he got an ambulance run to Asheville and his time comes up to go home. He still got time. He gotta come back and check the ambulance in and get it back ready to go. So you, you got no choice with all overtime stuff like that.
I realize you've gotta have so much. I realize. I mean, people's gonna get sick. People's gonna have family problems. I realize it's gonna be. But not, not Lord, not like what we seen.
Difference between construction, y'all, you're building, a building for something. And in the government world, you're serving the public. So like when I was building spaces, how many times I had to go out on weekends and turn biggest power on? Now, I could have said, no, I'm not gonna do that because I'm just working for. But the thing about this, I'm serving the public, that, that's my job. To go over and, but it's just, it is same with the department, same guy. Get stuck doing things that you didn't even know you was doing. But you can't even really. Can't really decide what plan to have because you don't know what you're planning for. Cause there's some stuff. Some of the places that there would be, what do you mean, why you come up with the joint distribution and tell them all? This, you know, it's, it happened.
I'll go along with everything except the, the firefighting thing. I think we would get on the ballot. And I'll pretty good go along with the rest.
Well, I think we got it in there. I haven't raised taxes with it in there.
And we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get courtesies. How many co- how many cars did you need courtesy? Thirteen, sixteen, one?
Yes.
And we're gonna go down to six. You're gonna be able to survive with six cars? You're gonna be able to survive with six?
We, we'd probably survive six if it were with a rig. Every year we get so many vehicles, instead of three, every rotation, we get a year, year of rotation.
If, would, would it work better for you on a yearly?
What I looked at.
Do you think the economy, if, if you do it every three, it's, it just keeps going. Yearly, Matt, would? I don't know.
What I looked at was the mileage of their vehicles. So six, that's six vehicles that were over a hundred thousand miles. The rest of them were less than a hundred thousand.
A hundred and twenty on it, still beating it.
So, so that's why.
Unfortunately, they know the vehicles, like a college, but it's very effective on them. We sell value down there with everybody, reliability is shitty. Somebody needs to lead our campaign, please pay them here.
Would you be willing to try six? Come back at it next year?
What's that?
Would you be willing to try six and be satisfied and come back next year?
Be willing, it's like we'll get only eight vehicles every year.
I'm gonna be gone, Curtis. Ain't no way I'll do this again. I've got a year and a half. I'm asking you what your opinion is if you can make it or not and run your sheriff's office the way you have.
But a lot of the. Take it in charge.
We use all fours. That's all I've ever had. There's a limit and I'll limit. If you're just willing to try the seats.
I'm not willing to compromise that seat without a shirt. We can do this. We can have a big rotation every year.
I agree with you. That's a big cut. What, sixteen to six?
Well, I think you should put a, a, a limit on, you, you need at least a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on a car before you put it out of service. I mean, if a car's got forty-five thousand miles, a hundred fifty thousand, sixty, seven, they're, they're still good cars.
I'm not sure what you should have done.
By committee, it's gonna be ten thousand. They're all around.
I'm talking about these patrol cars.
Are you gonna be able to make with this one new ambulance truck? That's what I was just trying.
When, when we don't get a new ambulance, the maintenance goes up.
That's what I was just trying to say a while ago, Phyllis. And I don't, sometimes I talk, I don't really think people realize what I'm trying to say. We gotta make our mind up on what's important. You know what I'm saying? A- a- and sometimes you can't do everything you want. Make your mind up what's the most important and let's go with it.
Beginning rotation is very important.
And I'm sure it happens too. Yeah. I'd hate to be headed towards Asheville and break down.
Little stretch a couple of years ago when we didn't get an ambulance for two years. Had the jump, four hours.
If we took the firefighters away, we could buy an ambulance, definitely.
And it's not out of the question to say, okay, we budget for one, but we're gonna be able to get two. I think the question still is, can we actually get two in a year because of the ordering and the halt? It's not out of the question, like this is just the beginning, basic budget. It's not out of the question to say in six months, oh yeah, we're gonna be able to get another one. So can we amend and have additional funding? Same thing with the sheriff. You know, if they have a car that blows up or something crazy happens, it's not out of the, out of the question to say, can we have another car? It's just saying that when you look at the vehicles in which they have and the mileage and the years and things, there are some that are higher mileage. And then there's, they have those little escapes that are older. So, but they're low miles. So I think it's not out of the question. This is just the beginning of where we start kind of thing.
Let me ask you another foolish question. All of your deputies wrecked a new truck, right? Totaled a new truck. Was that truck fully insured to where we got another one?
Well, we get, they give us the payment. I mean, they give us whatever the payout, whatever they consider the value at that point.
They were replacing that vehicle and we told them to put that money in the pot for a big rotation.
Oh, I understand. Yeah. Yeah. It's same as it's going to get another, right? That's what I think. But. Everybody, man, they take, y'all take me the wrong way a lot. I'm not just no and, and don't wanna spend their money. I look at it a little different. Let's spend our money on what we've got. We got to have, we gotta have courtesy. We gotta have time. To me, that's real important. Let's put it on the ballot. Right there, right there would be two, four, six, that we could save the money.
If you had it on the ballot, hey, would you vote for it?
No, I'm against. And that's what you're afraid of, Phil. You know people will not vote to raise your.
This, it's six years ago. These fire departments, they're gonna get here and track people. It's about the fire time. It is not gonna happen.
Let me, let me ask you one quick. Do you think the government's always right here?
But I don't think, um, sometimes I don't know. As far as any individual, may not know. Show me a better way.
Let's let the people speak.
I've been here and spoke. We had a room.
That was nineteen or twenty people that can't even vote in this county because the residency is flawed. If we'll do that, I'll vote for the budget. If we don't, I won't vote for it. But it don't matter to me because I'm gonna get out voted anyways. So I'm just wasting my breath and my hour sitting here talking.
Can we get a list of, can we just have a list of all the cars, all of us to see? Yeah, if you'll just print us out. And I'm, I, I just wanna s- see which ones are, you know, getting up there in mileage and which ones, you know, that way if, if there is a way to look at yearly, you know, rotation, we, we can do that, you know?
And in my opinion, my. And in my opinion, mo- most departments do not ask for vehicles, but I can tell you that. Most of the departments are just driving them within the county, we have very few departments that are driving very far. Um, but I would say, you know, like DSS, for instance, got their hopefully all at one time. So I don't know what their mileage looks like, they didn't request cars. So there are some departments that aren't just driving within the county. That could be going downstate or whatever, besides training, you know, everybody does training or whatever. But there are some departments that are continuously out further than even just the next county over Asheville, let's say. So I think that it would be a good thought to think about a regular rotation of vehicles.
Exactly. I, I'm. So, yeah, I, I mean, I'm open to looking at whatever, you know, I, I think. You know, if we, if we have cars that are getting close to some high mileage, let's, let's, let's get them changed, you know, I. I think if we can order two ambulance this year, if that's a possibility of getting them.
You just got three hundred thousand dollars to pay, you just said it's, we're under. And ambulance costs how much, Bob?
But we got one already in there. Four hundred, yep.
So there went you three hundred. If Curtis is willing to try, and this, and these commissioners sitting here will. Will bring it back to him next year, if he can't make it with the six, we give him what he wants. We give him six. But I honestly think we ought to look into. A man from Mountain Ford, he called and he give me down the road, called me all kinds of big names, I wouldn't buy a pack of roll ages from him again. We ought to look into uh, getting them cheaper some. If we can get them cheaper and the same vehicles with a warranty. Be better off. I don't care if they come from a. Any state.
Well, whoever we buy them from, there should be a warranty with them.
But they told me, Bobby, that they didn't have a warranty, and I couldn't understand buying a new vehicle without a warranty, I've never heard that before. Well, now, when you go buy a new vehicle, Curtis, it goes up so many miles or so many years. My truck just beat the mileage, or the years beat the mileage. Yeah, you get them both.
Which ever one come first?
Whi- which one ever come, but thirty-six thousand mile. I, I mean, mine was a hundred and twenty-five thousand with a Ford that come from the same place. Or a five year. And if they've just been giving Yance. Uh, thirty-six thousand, Yance has been getting who to do from the word go.
And it is special vehicle, isn't it?
Well, that gentleman in Tennessee told me that he'd, that he would give a better deal and that I'll have the same factory warranty, maybe a better warranty on some of them than you'd get yourself if you went to the dealer. I think it's worth looking into.
Do you have to find a female reverse?
She does. They send them all over, it's Asheville, Marion, Waynesville.
We've had another guy come by looking to be in and give us a ride home. The one that said what we're talking about.
I know him, I know him, well, the man accused me of him being a friend, he tried to woo his friend. I don't know, I know him, he's from buying a. I don't personally. He, that's just the business he's in. But uh. Mountain Ford man's not really nice to. So probably I do not, he's gonna like me anyways. But I don't care. Let's put it on the ballot, Phil. I've been down here two and a half years and I ain't won nothing. So I played checkers and you lose every time. Let's compromise, let's do it one time, see what happens.
Hand close session.
And other time I wasn't the one that held out, remember?
So this, because this budget is balanced. This is what will be put on display. Unless we wanna have another meeting this week with a change. Once it's on display and we have the public hearing, changes can be made after that, but we have to have it balanced to begin with.
In other words, once we display this, it'll have to stand ten days, we can't change nothing, no?
On the ten days, and then we have the public hearing, and then after that, it can be changed before we have to have it finalized at the end of June.
I do wanna ask about the rec cameras, so. Um, yeah, I wouldn't think it'd be, or think it'd be feasible to put cameras around that campus, it's too big. Um, so we, we want, we wanted to put more lights up, is that, is that the gist of it? What, what kind of lighting is Cabot looking at that, or who? Who would be?
It was just a suggestion.
Okay.
To say, you know, because one, the price of cameras is very expensive, plus getting them up. And so it was just maybe, maybe lighting, that would be, uh, something that would be like solar control. And in different areas, more of the areas that have issues, like the bathrooms versus, you know, or the pavilions maybe. Versus the playground, there are cameras that are ready to be set up at the pool area, so some of that will be covered.
Okay.
With cameras where we have those and we've had them. So, so there are some that will be set up, but yes. And we haven't looked at any kind of official lighting, once we get to the point. To say, yes, we're, this is what the plan is, then we would look at that.
Now, this salary study that we're, we're doing. Is it a raise by the proceeds of what you make? Is that what you're looking at again?
No, so it is based on grades and years of service. So what it does is it brings the person, the longer they've been here, the higher their salary would be. So, uh, most of the departments had great changes. Majority of them were up. Um, you know, we saw two and three jump for like the, the lower paid employees, custodian sanitation and those people, they had. Um, several great jumps, and then across the board, there were some people that had no great change. But there were, the majority of the county had, of employees had a great change.
So if you didn't have a great change, you wouldn't, you wouldn't get a raise, you wouldn't get.
No, the salary cha- the salary schedule changes a little bit based on what they, like what the starting pay is and then moving forward. So no, everybody would get something, but some people would get more than others based on their great change and then their years of service. Well, our work session is the third. I mean, would it be just easy to do it the next week? And then that way we have some time before the regular session on the seventeenth. I know that we're all tired of budget meetings, but we're, we're getting there, I promise, we're.
We've got us under what we did last year. But we had a tax increase last year, didn't we? We wasn't even, I had to done that, really. We did.
I think overtime, that can increase.
Basically, though, we're doing nothing about overtime. We're turning it over to comp time.
Well, it's the shortage of employees, uh, added to a lot of the overtime, didn't it? So you've got the employees up there, so you should be cutting the overtime.
Well, we, what we suggested, cause a couple thousand hours.
Getting two more employees?
Changing our schedule around a little bit. Waiting there, starting playing it. What we. Turned in would cut out a couple thousand hours of time per year.
Well, that's already in the budget, ain't it?
I don't have their updated overtime notes, so it's whatever was from last year, so that number can change once I get back. Yeah.
I would like to see how the, how, how the departments come out with what we give them last year, how they earn money, my. I'd like to see the money. I don't like a, a steady or, or valuation. Every job I've ever had, you've been paid on what you've done. And how good you done. You know, this raise across the board, that's not a good thing. I mean.
A lot of, and that's impersonal, you, you, right now, you don't need a raise.
I mean, you've got a great big one, just not long ago, don't need one. And there's a lot of other people that's hired up, they don't need a raise, man, they're fine where they're at. But then you take somebody that's, that's. Black and boys at the, at the green can. We were supposed to settle this last budget, everybody was supposed to add fifteen dollars an hour. And then here we come in here working on the budget, and here we forgot about six of them pilgrims out there that was still under fifteen dollars an hour. And it was supposed to have been fixed last year. And they made it a, a, a whole year still under that. We can't do that to them.
And that, that's your opinion, that they don't need a raise? But you go ask each county employees and see if they tell you the same.
I'm not talking about all the county employees, I'm talking about the top county employees, there's none.
I would give it. I don't care about someone's money, mate. So if somebody says they're gonna get a raise, they're gonna get across board, you know, it's like they just play it. There's no one. Grand speed and things. It's not gonna make any difference, or not. When I'm like, I appreciate, when I work for the county, I appreciate the raise, I thought, even though I knew somehow people got way more money.
Who else works for Sage Raise Lines besides a governor? A body of a governor. They're the only ones I know.
Oh, there's plenty of pri- private people that do.
Who does?
Place I work for does it.
What do you work for?
My church.
Your church?
Three percent raise is what they give me.
I mean, I, I can't think of none besides a governor that does it. Well, we used to work in a tunnel, Curtis, how'd they give you a raise? How much money you made them, didn't they? Just because you'd been there a long time, if you wasn't a good worker, and you didn't get a raise, did you? I guarantee it. I think we, I think we ought to worry about the little ones a lot more than we do the big ones. Because the last time I looked at a list, there's a whole lot of them. Sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, hundred and seven. Keeps it going up. Give the little people a break, give them some. Forget they're so steady, Joe.
Well, I think a lot of these people that's making on up there, they deserve it because they've got a load on their shoulders. If you think they're sitting there doing nothing.
Sometimes they're sitting in there doing nothing.
Sometimes they may do it.
Sometimes they sit in there, they're waiting, sitting at work.
They've got a load on their shoulders.
Everybody has a different opinion, Phyllis, and I'm glad we all do. Cause if we're all just alike, it would be a political war in the world. Right? But that's the only thing, I, I'll vote for this budget easy, Phyllis. I would like to see the, the firefighter, I'd like to see it on the ballot, and let the people talk if they will.
Well, we're ready to vote on. To leave it in the budget. Make a motion that we do leave it in the budget.
It's just a year and a half, how many years have we done without it? And that was hard. We weren't the hardest, or is it six?
It's six, tough.
Six, we could get the employees that we need for the things we've got to have. With just what little we're talking. And I think that we ought to build another forest station. We ought to build our own and tell Bryce and City Forest Department, here you go, here's your big fat zero. Got our own, let them fire for their sale. Cause I, ever since I've been down here, Bryce and City sit here and twisted our arm. And, and, and it's, and the twisting's even gonna get more, that, that you in school. They're gonna want a lot from us. And it's right around the corner. And I don't know what we're gonna come up to the money to do it.
Well, I don't see revenues creation a whole lot over the next few years.
I think if we would talk to the reservation at that. And if we would go in. To help them support the forty-two hundred acre track. And, and Cooper's Creek. That they might even give us enough land to build us a forest station, if we would guarantee them contract wise. To help them, cause look how far their forest station is away from, from that. So it would be benefiting them, benefiting us, and cutting this bunch out that's trying to squeeze us out of here. I think it's worth looking into. And, and, and if we started doing it, you'd hear a whole different tune instead of one, what was it, Bobby?
Two twenty-five. Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five? You'd hear them coming downhill.
Do we wanna, do we wanna set a date for the public hearing?
June the tenth, is that following Tuesday? Five P M, five thirty, which is our normal meeting time. So June the tenth, five thirty will be the budget public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I will be absent that day, just to let you know.
You gotta be here.
I'll be absent. Yes. I already have plans for that week.
We'll be three to one instead of four to one.
Well, and it cannot, I mean, if there's, if there's any kind of changes or whatever, yeah, it's just the public hearing. So, cause it'll go back on the regular session. Yeah. It'll go back on the regular session and that's normally when we vote on for the finals.
I'll be watching it, but I won't be here, I won't even be in town, so.
You going on vacation?
Yes, sir.
Where you going?
Out of town.
I'll make a motion.
Second.